Good morning, good morning, good morning, family here on 1010 W O L B. In conversation with L Y. Good morning. And joined in the batter up box, my adopted brother there, Mr. Mark C. Mark C., how are you this morning?
Hey, I'm doing good, big brother. How you doing this morning, man?
I'm doing okay and had a little small setback on Friday. We were trying to get my third and final fitting on my leg and we missed it by just about an inch. So that put me back two weeks, but God is good. We're gonna get it done.
Yes, you are.
I'm still making progress, but doggone it, I was sort of all wrapped up in thinking that it could happen. But hey, as the guy says to me, he said, look, when you're born, you're perfect. And when something has to be replaced on your body, that is something man has to do. And man, I will never get it perfect. So
That's true that.
Yeah, so we're gonna try it twice and have to try one more time. But we went last time out, we were two and a half inches. Now we're down to an inch of making it. And it has to be perfect in order for me to walk comfortably for basically for the rest of my life. So anyway, we'll work through it. But Mark, you know,
Yeah, boy.
I have to bring to the family's attention the fact that I got word, and now it's all spreading, spreading and spreading. I got word on the fact that the Almighty, sadly, I share this with the family. The Almighty has called the Reverend Dr. Alfred A. C. D. Vaughn. He was the pastor of Sharon Baptist Church. Many would call him Bishop. I remember one time sitting with him and Pastor Hurley Carter, my pastor. We were at a funeral at Bethel Church and somehow enough we got to talking about, well, they got to talking about bishops and Reverend Carter said, these doggone bishops, you got so many that a dime a dozen. So just too many of them. Him and Vaughn, him and God agreed, but he deserved the title Bishop. Bishop A. C. D. Vaughn. But nevertheless, we did get word on the fact that he was called by the Almighty home. And let me just say about him, this man, he was an exceptional man. Mark, I had two conversations with him that I speak about in my book. And one was during the time that I was having all those problems at being spelled or not in the Senate and going through all the charges and everything. And I went over to speak with him and he said, hold up. You just know how things are and you know and you believe. Stay focused on what you're doing. You can respond about how you carry yourself. And you keep on doing what you do. And I want you to know that all of us have to go through these periods in life where we have challenges. And he says, you're gonna make it. And then he prayed for me. Okay, God willing. And yes, indeed, of course, we know how that turned out when the court won and all that kind of thing. And then the other thing, the other thing that I will personally remember, and I was having some problems in church. And that's because I was spending so much time away from my mother, who everybody knows I was spoiled. And she and I, we did everything. We traveled together. Everything. I wouldn't, where I couldn't go, where I could go, she could go and that kind of thing. But I was busy in the House, the Senate, working at another job. And so the one fortunate thing that we know for sure was that I could have my Sundays with her. And I made it my business to make sure we got to church every Sunday. And we would always sit together right there, three rows from the back in the old shallow. And then when we moved over to the present shallow, mama, for some reason, liked to be sit in the back. So I sat with her. That was my time. And then we would leave and go to brunch lunch with my godmother, that kind of thing. Long story short, she liked to sit there and I was blessed and honored and humbled by being made a deacon. And all the deacons are supposed to sit together, not in the front of church.
Yep.
And I had, I was struggling, man. I had, I had said, you know what? No, I must sit in the back with my mama. And that was the time that I could do that and I did. And I was hoping that that would not cause a problem. And so I had a chance to, once again, go and get counsel from Reverend Vaughn, Bishop Vaughn. And he said, first of all, if I was you, I would have done the same thing. And second, let me, I'm gonna talk to, he called him Harold. They were tight, real tight, Pastor Hurley Carter. And sure enough, within two days, Reverend Carter called me and he said, first of all, you had to go to Vaughn. He said, you could have came directly to me with what you wanted to do. And I said, Pastor, I didn't want to ask for an exception or anything. I just was nervous about if I was right. And anyway, long story short, I'm now, that's where I sit in the back. And even to this day, I do that because even though she's passing, that was 2007. When I go in there, I go in there as I think about my mother every day. But that's the one location that I can know and that's what I'm familiar with. And so that's why, that's why I sit, right where me and mama would sit. But I thank Reverend Vaughn for, I have to believe that Reverend Carter would have given me the same advice. But anyway, that's where I've been sitting and he was a person you could go to. And it didn't matter if you were a member of his church or not. He was just gonna give you advice and counsel to the best of his abilities. I love the man. I was happy that when we gave out our Black Men Matters Award, that we were one of the first 10 to get that. And he was telling me, he said, why me? I said, because you are an example. You epitomize the best of black men. And I still believe that and that's the truth. He will be missed, man. He will be surely missed, Reverend Bishop, Dr. A. C. D. Vaughn. And I'm telling you, the shallow family, excuse me, the Sharon family Baptist Church.
Yeah.
They better, I don't know how they're gonna do it, because it's gonna be what they would call an exceptionally large funeral. My going, his homegoing service is gonna be major, man. You hear me? Major.
Yeah. I went over there one time, Larry. I used to hear Leo talk about Sharon Baptist Church all the time. And I went over there for Corbin Vaughn's funeral.
Oh, his son.
Yeah. Yeah. I went over there for that, for that. That was packed out, you know, and condolences to their family. But yeah, I was able to go over there one time for Corbin Vaughn's funeral. And I used to always hear Leo talk about Sharon Baptist Church.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, for Leo probably calling us. He probably calling us.
What you got for us today?
Yeah, you know, and I'm hoping our partner to show up. But the one thing that, and before we get into the real, you know, serious, serious stuff, Larry, you remember the wire?
Yeah, of course. I was in the fifth, I was in the fifth.
Yeah, right, 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 duh.
And I'm still getting little, little, real tiny, tiny, tiny royalties on that. Go ahead, go ahead.
Remember Lance Riddick?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, man. I'm the one that played the sergeant. I think he played a sergeant or detective, but he passed away.
Yes, he did. And it was 60 years old?
Yeah.
Yeah, man.
I loved, you know, him as an actor, man. I loved him as an actor. And you know, you know also that Zeke Cohen is running for, he's gonna be on board with us next week, but you know, he officially announced that he's running for city council president. And I got to hear this morning, because we come on at 10, I got to hear extensive interview with him this morning. So that's gonna be, that's gonna be interesting also.
Well, that race will be interesting. That race will be interesting. I'm sure it will be. Nick Mosby informed the community, the city, last, latter part of last week that he intends to run again. So it's gonna be contests. I'm sure one or two others will get in the race, but we'll have a conversation with both of the gentlemen.
Well, that's good because I was listening this morning and a lot to say that I agree with because, you know, I just, you know, and Larry, you know, sometimes things just have to be said, man. Our city could be in a much better, better spot, man. And that starts with leadership. You know, I believe if you were mayor, I believe if, you know, some other folk were mayor, we just wouldn't be in this, this, what we are in, you know, this craziness that's going on in our city. And that takes me back to when we were at the town hall the other night. And this can't be said enough, Larry, because I told you, I called the city, the mayor's office and talked with somebody. I called the city council president's office and I talked to somebody. I called the chief, the police chief's office and I talked to somebody. 410-396-2020. It'd be either Myrna or the other lady. And you could, because I call quite often because I don't understand why we don't have consistent community police. And I don't understand why hotspots in schools, school police are not out there, you know, on that. Like, like, give me, I'm gonna give you a for instance. I was just, I was talking to my son. He 37. And where the last young man was killed, Larry, over at Northern Parkway and McClean Boulevard. I used to live over there in Northern Village and I used to work at Northern Parkway Junior High. And that gas station, my son say, daddy, he went to Norman. He said, he said, daddy, in 2003 and '04, that gas station was a hotspot for drugs, you know. The same thing up Edmiston Village, because this was pissed me off, you know. We not even reacting. We just, I don't know what we are. But same thing at Edmiston Village, the lady came out, the head of the council out there, the neighborhood council out there over a year and a half ago. Her, Kelly Vaughn, Daru and all, they were up there pointing out that where police were sitting out there at the open air drug market at that gas station. And we were up there. We, our husbands, up there a few times and pointed that out. So why wasn't, you know, a school police sitting on that parking lot? You know, we hear, you know, well, police can't stop crime, this, that and the other. Well, no, but we don't have just regular crime. There's always been stupid crime. And I say it, Larry, when I was caught up in the digs, we did stupid crimes. But this is lawlessness in our cities and we're not using, you know, our officers. We're not using our school police. They've come out and whistle blew. They not letting us do our job. Teachers have came out. Principals have came out, you know. And I, and one thing, you know, whoever went city council president, Zeke Cohen, I didn't, you know, he was a teacher, he was a middle school teacher and he was the head of a nonprofit. That's how I met him, you know. I don't care nothing about you being born in Baltimore. I don't care nothing about that. I didn't know his wife was a physician in Charahill or none of that, you know. I don't care about, I'm sick of them not showing up, man. Because it's no excuse for them not to bend over arena players when the number one killer of teenagers, students in Baltimore City is murdered, you know. And the young lady said, all of them should have been there to hear that young lady say, 25 years old with a nonprofit, say that our students are brilliant. They just need the resources. But the number one thing she said that our young people want is to live. And that's shameful. I've never heard that anywhere else in the whole United States. The number one, that young lady said that and none of them were there to hear her or that mother. The mother said that she's got a gun permit, Larry.
Yes, she did. Didn't want it, but felt she had to do it.
Didn't want it.
But felt she had to do it. I heard her. I was sitting right there.
Her son was almost killed. Just went to a party because somebody carrying a gun. And he said, kill me. And she said, it ain't like he ain't got one. And the girl that cried on the lawn when city hall was still shut down. I never forget that.
We got a lot of callers we gotta get to.
Okay, all right, partner.
Yes. Okay, we gotta go. And just as you said, we got Leo, we got Robert, and we got Alan, Dwight and Gator. Let's see if we can't get through and let others get on board as well. It's 18 after the hour. Let's pick up Brother Leo, the senior warrior. Good morning, good man.
Good morning, Senator Larry Young and Brother Mark Cannon. How you guys doing?
How you doing, man?
Okay, well.
Little junior for the project.
That's what I'm calling. 440 Cummins Court in McCullough Homes, 1942. Praise the Lord.
All right.
Listen, I I want to offer my condolences to the family and friends and members of Sharon Baptist Church for the life and legacy of the pastor, Pastor A. C. D. Vaughn. I'll call him the dean of preachers for many, many reasons. For at least seven, eight years, I was the scout master of troop 257 at Sharon Baptist Church. In my home church, Concord Baptist Church, I was scout master 16 years. And we can go on and on. So when you, when you talk about feeling at home at Sharon and other places, very much feel at home for the devotion and service that that church has given our community for more than 135 years. Let me say as well, I want to lift up the family and offer my prayers for the family of Reverend, of Dr. Charles W. Griffin. Doctor, I received a call on Friday morning from his sister that Dr. Charles W. Griffin passed on Thursday night at Northwest Hospital. 92 years young, served with a life of distinction, more than 25 years on the Board of Regents at Morgan State University and president for more than 25 years of the West Arlington Neighborhood Improvement Association. So as soon as those arrangements are made available, I'll certainly share that with you. My last comments focus on the Roots of Scouting Organization, of which I am president and founder. We meet tonight on the third Monday of every month at 7 o'clock at 301 McMecon Linden Park Apartments for senior citizens, first floor. All are welcome. We're preparing for our visit to the Penn Relays in April, April 29th of this year, Saturday. We'll be there all day. And you, I'll leave it up to the rest of you. Do the history, the black history of the Penn Relays and how that factors into what we want done in a positive way for our young people.
Leo, Leo?
I'm sorry.
I wanted to ask you, how much is the tickets to go with y'all for that? I have been to the Penn Relays and, oh my goodness, it's been at least seven years. I wanna go.
On the first, the first level, the ground level, it's $145. That includes the motor coach bus transportation and admission to the Penn Relays. And in the upper tier, it's $130 a person. We leave at 7 o'clock in the morning on Saturday, April 29th. And you might call our coordinator, Brother Michael Douglas, 443-363-9275. If you have additional questions. Of course, he'll be at the meeting tonight here at 301, here in Linden Park Apartments in Bolton Hill. So come one, come all. Joshua Harris, vice president of the NAACP chapter here, said he will be present at night to give us an updated report on their charge of racism against the gas and electric company. And Brother Giovanni Patterson is also expected to be here to give us an update on his lawsuit against the Baltimore City Public Schools. So we're gonna stay on the firing line
Thank you.
in coordination with all of the efforts for justice.
And we thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, good brother. Appreciate it. The senior warrior, Leo Barrow, one of our honor roll award recipients as well. And Robert, Alan, Dwight and Gator, please be patient with us. I have asked for this gentleman to come on board and he's here this morning. So let me get him up and we'll have a conversation with him. I will get all of you on board. Robert, Alan, Dwight and Gator, please let me do this and then we'll move on. Thank you so very much for your patience. Family, let's go to the, what I call my major box here for interview. And when we do that, we have a major person. And this person, in this case, is familiar with us. He's coming on to in conversation with L Y. I'm speaking about the president of the Baltimore City Council, Honorable Nick Mosby. Good morning, good morning to you, sir. How are you?
I'm doing great. Good morning, honorable Larry, Senator Larry Young. How you doing today?
Okay. And when I've talked to you briefly, we, I heard about your announcement. And so obviously you got some competition coming, but tell us, man, what exactly is going on in your role there at the council? And if you want to talk about your decision and share that again with us, you can do it. Otherwise, I want to find out what's going with the BG&E situation and what's going on. Are we gonna see a stronger Board of Estimates because you're gonna try or somebody's trying to get that to be lesser than three reporters of the mayor? Anything else you have on board with you?
Yes, Senator. So, you know, I come on to talk with L Y. I'll talk about anything. So don't ever hesitate to ask me. But, you know, I mean, I think that the past two years that I've been council president, we've laid a lot of groundwork to really put us in a position to continue to push down the path of good governance. You know, the city charter is probably, if not the most mayor strong charter in the entire country. You know, there's strong mayor forms of government and then there's like Baltimore. And I think you brought it up when you talk about like the Board of Estimates. And ultimately, the mayor's decision to unilaterally be able to give, you know, the $100 million plus contract to BG&E and take it from, you know, bringing it into the city and the city, ensuring that, you know, appropriate local hiring guidelines are in place or ensuring that minority women owned businesses are at the table. You know, we don't have the opportunity to just continue to kind of give that up. And I know the mayor was, you know, make that decision off the best information that he had. I mean, ultimately, you know, it was the city solicitor that said that he could do what he was able to do. But I think it really provided a symbolic highlight to kind of how we need to change government and how our form of government has not necessarily been beneficial to progress in the city forward. So, you know, not just as a release to the configuration of the Board of Estimates, but there's other things that potentially will be up for discussion. And ultimately, the voters would have to decide come the general election in '24. So I think that, again, the reason that we're here is because a lot of the groundwork was laid. I think now more people are paying attention to the Board of Estimates than ever before. You know, we're really challenging the administration on issues around minority contracts, women owned contracts, around local hiring, around ensuring that we're not doing sole source bids, that we're actually, well, sole source contracts, that we're actually bidding it out to try and get the best competitive price, but also the best type of deal for the city. And again, you know, that's companies that are based in our city, companies that employ residents of our city, companies that give back to our city. So, you know, I'm excited to do this role. I brought a lot from Annapolis, you know, working on the council for five years and then going to Annapolis as a delegate for four years. You know, a lot of the institutional inner workings that I understand that you know for being down in Annapolis, city hall didn't necessarily have. And then when we look at committee structure, we look at other things like that. Those are the expertise that I was able to bring back to city council and I want to continue to do that work.
Help me out here. The fact that the controller and yourself decided to challenge was what the mayor did was right, has that fallen back to accepting the city solicitor's ruling?
No, 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 no. So, you know, I still adamantly disagree that, one, we shouldn't do this deal. But more importantly, that the vote was not valid. We haven't voted on it as a body. I mean, the meeting wasn't open appropriately. The protest that was supposed to be heard based off our rules wasn't heard. I mean, it's just a number of different things that presented a problem. And I still, I still feel very strongly about it. You know, obviously, the city solicitor is the top lawyer in the city. That office is supposed to be independent. We know that the mayor hires and fires the solicitor. But, so we reached out and attempted to get independent kind of review to the attorney general. And we were unsuccessful in them providing an opinion on it. A lot of times, they don't get involved with local issues, particularly when, I guess, their sticky is this. So the attorney general, you know, didn't decide to move further with it. So, no, I mean, I want to be very clear. I think that my position, which has always been my position, is that it wasn't a valid vote.
Did the public in one point, voters at one point have the issue in front of them and voted that they did not want this to occur?
Yeah, so the voters in 2020 election, right? No, no, the voters, the voters in the last election, '22, there was a referendum question, a charter amendment question that basically said, you know, do we want to sell our city own asset, specifically the underground condo? And close to 77% overwhelmingly said no, that they wanted to keep and retain it. I mean, the one thing
Is that right there to me is the reason why? I, listen, I don't know for sure who's right or wrong on the issue per se. But when the voters were given the opportunity to vote, they made clear what they wanted.
Now, to be fair to the administration, the mayor will say that, hey, look, this is not a sale. We're just giving them 100% control. But it's basically control in everything but the name of ownership. You know, they get to do whatever they want to do. They get to retain their money that was gonna come into the city as revenue to ultimately run that program. So, I mean, again, I have a lot of different problems with it, no matter where you turn. I had some concern with it, but the mayor will say that this is not a sale. So it's still consistent and that's what the solicitor will say, that it's still consistent.
I think it's a big issue next year, Senator. I think it's gonna be a big issue in the '24 election. So, okay, now, in terms of that, what about the fact that you decided that you want four more years?
Yeah. Well, I mean, again, I think that, again, you know, we've laid the groundwork. There's a lot more to do. When you see folks interested in the Board of Estimates, you haven't seen that, I don't think, in a while. When we talk about challenging and trying to, how do we move our city forward? It really starts with ensuring that folks It really starts with, uh, ensuring that folks are getting hired on these contracts, ensuring that local businesses are participating in these contracts, ensuring that we are, uh, minority, uh, uh, work is happening. Uh, and I think that since day one, I mean, I can go tr- contract by contract. Uh, we've done a lot to really move that needle, uh, in the right direction. And, you know, I think there's, there's a lot more work to do. I think with my background as an electrical engineer, um, a natural problem solver, that, you know, these are very complicated issues that our government hasn't really changed in hundreds and hundreds of years. Uh, and, you know, I think that, um, my admin- my administration, my team, uh, myself, we're primed to do that. And those are the things that we're setting up. That's why, you know, that's why before you wouldn't necessarily know about a B G E issue. It just kinda gets swept under the rug, it kinda go over your head and it, it, it is what it is, right? Um, but I think that we did a really good job of, you know, just saying, hey, can we pause this thing? Can we educate the public? Can we provide full transparency? And that's why ultimately we called the Legislative Investigative Committee. That's why we subpoenaed the records and that's why we went down that path. So, you know, eh, despite what the solicitor says or what anybody else says, the history book is stamped. Uh, and, um, you know, folks kinda have, have, have been awoken, uh, to kinda understanding, know the operations of the Board of Estimates and, and City Hall. And that's ultimately our job to be oversight and to provide transparency.
Yes, sir. Mark, you have a question before we go, go?
Yeah, no, I'm, how you doing, uh, Council President? And Mark, how you doing?
I'm okay, man. Um, I, I, I actually, uh, I believe you know my oldest daughter, Kimberly Smith.
Okay.
Yeah, Kimberly Smith, Tony Smith, that's, that's my oldest daughter, Kimberly Smith.
Oh, okay.
But, um.
So I said hi.
Yeah, the, my, my most important thing, my most important thing is the lawlessness in this city. You know, I'm all over the place and I'm all over the place because, um, uh, of the lawlessness. We all have crime, you know, and, and police can't stop crime, no. But police are the deterrent. And, and I'm asking you, Dr. Tyrone Powers, um, ha- he has the answers. He does police work right now, retired, um, retired FBI agent. And, and, and him and Larry, if, if, if you need to, to get his phone number or whatever from Larry, because it's not working. You know, whatever, whatever's going on in this city, uh, we had a town hall, I called your office the other day. And, um, I don't think, I don't think any, any leader should have been anywhere but there. And I did call Z Coen's office too, and, uh, he couldn't make it. He'll be on board with us next week, you know? And I don't really care too much about the politics right now. I care about the bloodshed that's going on in our city. I talk to officers all the time and, uh, you know, some are out in the street.
Mark, we gotta get a question in there so that we can move to these five callers we've been holding up.
My question is, my question is, can you sit down, uh, with, with, with the, 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 uh, current Commissioner and Bart Dale, who know the way, and, and, and find out why our officers, you know, are, are not able to go out and, and do, uh, uh, you know, uh, um, constitutionally police and check the businesses and stuff like some of them are doing?
Yeah, I mean, so I have a, a monthly meeting that we, uh, reengage with the Commissioner. Um, I mean, I'll ask that specific question. Um, I think if you tune into the quarterly meetings that we have with the Police Department, um, a lot of those questions are brought up, uh, particularly as it relates to constitutional policing and the consent decree, uh, and what officers are and are not doing. Um, so have you had a chance to tune into or participate in, in any of the quarterly meetings?
No, actually, man, I'm, I'm, I'm out in the street, man, and, and, you know, people are saying, you know, they tired of the meetings, man. They want some action. They wanna see the police out of their cars and, and patrolling the areas and, and checking the businesses like the Commissioner told me to my face that they supposed to be doing.
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood your question. I thought you were asking for me to have a meeting.
Yeah, well, not with them, with Tyrone Powers, Dr. Tyrone.
Oh, no, you said, you said with the deputy, you said with the Deputy Mayor and the Police Commissioner.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sit down with them, but also Dr. Tyrone Powers, you know.
Yeah, okay. No, yeah, I have a, I have a very strong relationship with Dr. Yeah, I have a very strong relationship. Yeah, I have a very strong.
Bart Dale know the way.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The current mayor said that, um, that he should have been the, the next Commissioner after Bill Phil. So he know the way. So he could show this Commissioner the way. Why is it not happening?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Mr. President, you have a closing statement and we would like very much to get with you at least, uh, once a month. If something else happens, you can always get to me and we'd be happy to push you out.
No, thank you. Truly appreciate you, Senator L Y, always utilizing your platform to inform our community and provide me an opportunity to talk to them. Um, if, if for whatever reason you wanna pull me on, please don't ever hesitate to do so.
Haven't done so. I will certainly have. That's how it's been between us. I wanna keep it that way.
Yes, sir. I truly appreciate that.
All right, thank you, man. Appreciate the President of City Council. Y'all meeting tonight, sir?
Uh, no, no meeting tonight. Thank you so much, L Y. Thank you, Mark.
All right, peace now. Yes, sir.
All right, have a good.
President of City Council, Nick Mosby. All right, let's get to the lines and, uh, these folks were kind enough to hold for us and so we're gonna get to them right now, starting with Robert. Robert, good morning.
Good morning, Senator Young and Mark C. I would like to extend my deepest sympathies and condolences to the friends, many friends, and to the family of the Reverend Doctor Bishop Vaughn. And one of, uh, the longtime pastors there was my barber, Mr. Tally, who owned the barber shop in the eighteen-hundred block of, uh, Longwood Street. He had invited me on a few occasions to Sharon Baptist and, um, that man cut my hair for over fifty years. He was my barber. Lieutenant Young, Senator, there's a rumor going around with your name attached to it and I called to find out if it's true.
Uh-oh.
The rumor coming out of Vegas is you're the only man in the world with his bracket still intact. And that sick daddy Clarence once said, that bracket is worth big paper, Larry. Big paper. You can cash it now.
Robert, see, see, that's why my hair is gray now. That's why, Mark, this guy has put me under the pressure. All I can tell you, good brother, is the paper bracket that I have, you, you wouldn't wanna see. I, I, I don't, I don't know what I'm gonna do. And I, when I, so I decided I'm gonna wait to the final four and then I'll be ready. Cause I, I'm not doing too well otherwise. How, 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 how was you doing? How are you doing, Robert?
Oh, I, I, I went down in the first day.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, I, I never could believe Fairleigh Dickinson was, was gonna beat Purdue.
Hello.
But, uh, you know, hello. Young brothers, boy, they was just running a while in that court. But Larry.
Yes, sir.
I can understand that with, with that kinda money involved, that you don't wanna put it out there. It's not getting a lot of, you know, you don't want everybody to know right away.
Stop, man.
But you sitting down with one of them umbrella drinks.
Oh, my goodness.
Sitting back at the sunshine.
Robert, listen, I, I, I don't have much black hair left. You're trying to make sure that everything goes gray. That's okay, good brother. I tell you what, though, I will make a decision between now and the final four, then I'll be ready.
I'll be ready for cash.
I'll find you.
That'd be the best from football to basketball.
I'll find you, man. I'll find you.
You gonna put brains in the poachers here.
I'll find you. Goodbye.
Goodbye, Senator.
Mark, I tell you, every, every, every Super Bowl he puts me through this. Let me pick up on Brother Alan. Alan, good morning. How are you, brother?
How you doing, uh, Brother Larry and Mark C? No, Nick Mosby's a very intelligent guy. I heard him over there on the, uh, can I call this radio station? Cause it's in Baltimore.
No, sir. Just, just say you heard him on another station.
Yeah, they're talking about, uh, 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 the cond- the electric condon and, uh, talking about, uh, his reelection. He worked in Annapolis. You worked in Annapolis, right, Larry?
Twenty-three years. Twenty-three years.
He, he was more effective. You think he can work, uh, Nick can work better with the governor of, of, uh, Westmore because electric out of California coming in twenty thirty-five? Politics is all about taxing the people, taxing blood out of a tournament, you know what I'm saying? You're not gonna get perfection out of government. But I would like for him to be in the Biden Administration or the, uh, Moore Administration. Cause you know why? One man can't do it in the government. If that was, if Mark C. think, uh, the police, the Devon Commission can solve all this crime, go to every urban city. We have to get economic and, uh, and the guy got a, a degree in, uh, electrical engineer. He oughta be the CEO of, uh, B G E because Rhode Island, they had a black CEO. They got high utility bills and he went back to Georgia. See, the government about, uh, see, Nick is very intelligent. They get mad at him cause he worked for the people, that people work against you when you work for your people. That he should be the CEO, he should be in the Moore Administration or the Biden Administration called Black Men. We won't devote Democrat. But that's why I said that, uh, electric is coming, so he oughta, uh, use his, uh, degree and, uh, educate us on electric, uh, the, the electric movement coming out of California in twenty thirty-five. Electric cars, electric everything, batteries and everything.
All right.
Thank you, now.
All right, have a seat. And let's go and pick up Brother Dwight. Good morning. How are you, good brother? Good morning.
Good day.
Dwight? Brother Dwight?
Yes, sir.
Speak up.
Good morning, sir. How you doing? Mark C., how you doing, brother?
How you doing?
Good show, Larry. Larry, I got a couple of points I'm gonna go real fast.
All right.
Um, the first point is, um, simply goes to the Ron family.
Yes.
Very good friends of mine's. Uh, we, we got to, um, one day I seen him on Security Boulevard and he had, had a flat. He was waiting for that AAA to come. I turned all the way around and asked him, I said, Ron, you okay? And he said, yeah, brother, I'm all right. So I went on about my way. And the second thing is, I cherish the moment that when he gave me, Larry, he gave me the Man of the Year Award at Morgan State College.
Wow.
I never told you that.
No.
I don't go around bragging about myself, you know, I'm just very modest with that. And I, I feel as though that some people, if I tell them, they, it's like jealousy towards me. So I, I try to, you know, not create that hostile attitude against them because our people do that to each other. We gotta stop that.
No, you deserve, I wish I had known that, Brother Dwight. I'm not surprised that you got it at all. I know what you mean. I mean, you, you show by example that you care for us as a people.
Know who else's name was on, on the certificate?
Who else?
Um, Pratt, Ms. Pratt.
Ruth Pratt?
Yes, ma'am. They were both on the same, on the stage at the same time when I got the award.
Uh-huh.
From Ms., uh, West, remember Ms. West from St. John's?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, that, the organization, the women from, from, um, from Sharon Baptist gave me that award.
Oh, right.
It's a group of women that give men, it was like thirty-five, and guess who else's name was in there? I'm gonna go real fast.
Uh-huh.
Um, our brother that's on W B A L now, um, that was the spokesman for the, for the Police Department.
Mm-hmm.
He, he was sitting behind me and, uh, we both got the award together.
Okay.
I ca- I can't even remember his name right now because I'm talking real fast. But I just wanted to say, you know, and I sent the, the award down to North Carolina to, to my, Ms. Faust. Remember Benjamin Faust, our wife?
Oh, he was a great pastor there.
I sent the, I sent the award down there, but I got the paper one. I'm gonna show you.
All right.
I'm gonna show you the paper one with.
I know you. I believe you. I believe that. And, and I'm not surprised that they would reach out and, and give you that acknowledgement. You're good people, man.
It's not about me, Larry. It's about me helping people.
All right.
I've been an actress for over fifty years. A lot of people don't know that. May the work I do speak for me and I'm gonna end this conversation. God bless you, Mark C. God bless. Good information. Good show, Larry.
Appreciate you, Brother Dwight.
It was worth waiting for. And President, thanks for the information. You know, you my boy. Please, God bless.
All right, now, thank you. And, uh, one of the, uh, things that I will certainly have to say upfront, uh, during the early days of my rehab, um, Mark, Dwight was there for me and helped me the first sixty, sixty, seventy-some days. He was there to, uh, get me from location to location. And, uh, just a good brother and, uh, being, being an empathy himself, he was able to give me the counseling that I, that I deserved. And so I will always appreciate him, always. All right, let's pick up Doctor. All right, let me go to Marvin Doc C. Good morning, Doc.
Good morning to you, great gentleman. Good morning to you. We, we lost two.
Doc, how you doing?
I'm doing good. We lost two great ones this weekend, uh, with not only, uh, A C D Vaughn, but also Charles Griffin. Charles was president, I don't wanna say how many years ago, but, uh, that he was president up in the neighborhood that he was in. But thanks to Leo, I had a chance to drive, uh, Dr. Griffin home, uh, after we celebrated Leo's birthday last year. Uh, so we, 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 we lost, so I was kinda laughing with Charles cause Charles, uh, likes to play cards, uh, for money.
Oh, my goodness.
I said, Charles, I, I came in, get, get to the table to bet with y'all guys, y'all, y'all big high rollers. But we, we, we lost two good ones, but here's, here's a nice little funny joke, uh, about our great leader. Cause if there was a pastor or pastors in Baltimore City was, uh, Dr. A C D Vaughn, without a doubt.
No doubt about it.
When he was president, four years or five years, four, we're talking about different years of the ministerial group. But an outstanding gentleman, I like Leo, I had a chance to read him as a, a little child because I went to Coast Scout Pack Number Two Fifty-Seven and that's where we met, was at Sharon Baptist Church. But, uh, one, one little funny little incident, I'll leave with this. I got a call one day from, uh, from our good A C D Vaughn and A C D Vaughn said, uh, Dr. Cheetum? I said, yes, sir. What do I owe this honor to get a call from you? He said, well, my son Corrigan told me that I'm not in your booklet of heroes and she-roads. I said, oh, Lord, I've been troubled there. And, uh, from A C D Vaughn, once I explained it to him, I said, everything that we looked up was basically indicating that, you know, his ministerial schooling, uh, some of the churches that he passed at were all in Virginia. He said, well, I gonna forgive you this time, Doc Cheetum, but I'm proud to say that I was born in Baltimore City. So in my booklet of heroes and she-roads, he listed, he's, there's like five or six people on each road. There are about almost three hundred people listed, but I put him in a row, all by itself. And I said, pastor of pastors is Reverend Dr. A C D Vaughn. But I, I think we can say there's some great people, but I wanna say that's the greatest pastor. Next, next to your pastors, uh, Senator Young.
Thank you, thank you.
Reverend A C D Vaughn was the pastor of pastors, without a doubt.
No doubt about it, Doc. No doubt about it, good brother. You on point, a hundred percent. All right, thank you, good brother.
God bless you all.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
All right, you should've done.
Why are we? Uh, family, I want you to, cause coming up eleven o'clock will be a conversa- not a conversation. Have spent some morning time with Ms. May Bell and she just got finished a marvelous, uh, fashion show that was, that's the talk of the town and, uh, standing room only. And she will be talking about that plus many things and usually has some wonderful guests as well, as well. That's eleven o'clock. But in the meantime, please get a pen and pencil ready. I got a couple of things I wanna share with you so that you might be informed in advance. First, I wanna remind you, please, come tomorrow night. The Greater Baltimore Chapter of the National Action Network will be meeting, a monthly meeting, the third Tuesdays of the month. We meet at the new Shallow Baptist Church, twenty-one hundred North Monroe Street. Parking is free and we start at six-thirty. Try to be out by eight fifteen, eight-thirty at the latest. And tomorrow, we're going to, uh, finish, we have a few more folks that are gonna get the Honor Roll Award. Uh, and, uh, they're gonna be with us. And, but our speaker is gonna be a brother who has just soared in credibility and having great interest in what he's doing and why, to the point, uh, that, uh, there's a film coming out, uh, documentary on, on his, The Warrior Lawyer. And that's Jay Wendell Gordon. He'll be with us tomorrow night. He'll be the speaker. And let me just say that, uh, yesterday I was invited, uh, to be, uh, part of a V I, VIP art show that he hosted at his wonderful home. And, uh, my goodness, Mark, what you telling me? It was not, I wouldn't say standing room only, but everybody who could be was there. And, uh, some of the best artwork I've seen in years. And, uh, nevertheless, uh, wonderful home and all of us, it was just a joy to be there with, uh, him and his family there. And they got a wonderful home and the art artist, and I'm gonna have to help be able to explain, uh, to you about the gentleman who, he provided his, uh, his home to be used for this art showing. And, uh, I had an old friend of mine who I had not seen in about, oh, ten years, Marion Powell. And she showed up and brought her two nieces and one of the nieces brought three pieces. And, uh, so I said, oh, my goodness, embarrassing me. But anyway, I, I, listen, I didn't have the resources, Mark. I, I'm gonna be honest about it. I didn't have the resources. But be, be that as it may, it was a wonderful thing for him to do for this artist. I'm sure. as it may, it was a wonderful thing for him to do for this artist. I'm sure the gentleman appreciated it. And, uh, Jay Alda can tell you, good brother, wonderful home. Glenn, thank you for thinking of me. The other thing I want, want to share with you is that, um, coming up on the, from, uh, 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 April, the, it's that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday after Easter, I think I'm right about this, the twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth, the, those, that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday is the National Action Network Annual National Conference. Now, a lot of folks tell me, Larry, I want to go, but three days in New York, that's, uh, expensive. But let me just share with you, we're going to put five, a bus.
Yes.
Uh, to go up, and, uh, we're gonna choose tomorrow night what day that bus is gonna go. Are you gonna get, go there to be there Wednesday? You're gonna go there to be there Thursday? Or you're gonna go to be there on Friday? Now, this is how we're gonna do it. Uh, for the, we're gonna pay for half of the bu, well, if that bus situation comes to, let's say, for round trip, round trip now to New York and back, if that comes to fifty dollars, then the chapter will pay half. If it comes to eighty dollars, the chapter will pay half. If it comes to a hundred dollars, the chapter will pay half. But you're gonna have to have your money upfront in order for you to qualify. We're only gonna take an hour. I, I wish I could give you more details, but we're trying to decide what day, 'cause nobody that I've been able to talk with said, tell me they can come the whole three days. So, when we come together tomorrow night, there'll be those who are there in the room, you'll be able to help vote which is the best day for that bus to leave. To go up to New York for the National Action Network Conference, and let me tell you, it's always, always something you would not want to miss. I've been going now for close to fifteen years, Miss Vaughn. And it's a powerful conference, and so I do want to encourage you, if you go, uh, to be, come tomorrow night, sign up so that if, and, now, listen, you can go by train, you can go by bus if you want on your own, and let me know so that I can get you registered. I want to get you registered. I want to get you registered, because it's gonna be a major conference. The Reverend now sharpened, puts it together tight and right. One of the things is gonna be a Baltimore segment, uh, but the Baltimore segment, there's gonna be one of our entrepreneurs, uh, Mr. Tyrone, Dr. Tyrone Taboran. He's gonna be presenting his STEM City USA, uh, possession, will be one of the sessions that are be presented, uh, at the conference. I'm so proud of Dr. Taboran and the STEM City USA, and that's gonna be major. The, uh, my, our chapter, as well as ten or fifteen others, will be part of this national pushout, the Reverend, Reverend Dr. Taboran is doing. And, um, I'm very honored that I'll be happy to be a part of that, uh, session as well. So, if, again, Dr. Taboran, thank you for making it possible to participate, and I'm sure that our chapter leaders are gonna benefit from your plenary session, from your plenary session. So, that's gonna be, uh, uh, done, and I'm happy. Okay, Mark, um, you got a final statement or two before Sean gives me the, you know, the hook?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, absolutely, man. I, um, I hope, I hope that we're able to go. Um, and also, man, I, I want to thank, I, I, I really do want to thank, um, City Council President, uh, Nick Mosby, uh, for coming on, man, and, um, you know, because it, 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 it's dire, you know, in our community. And I just want to say, you know, I said it straight up, you know, um, that police cannot stop crime. There's always gonna be stupid crime, but police is the ones that's trained and, and the deterrent, and the ones that the young people say they want in the community so they'll feel safe.
You know, Mark, I was just, you can finish, but I did want to say, I forgot one question that I had planned to ask. Ooh, you should see this outfit.
What, 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 what?
No. Okay, I'll have to say, okay, you're right.
Y'all get a roll, get a roll.
I will, I will. Woo, my goodness, my goodness. Okay. Don't start. Woo, my, my, my. Anyway, um, gee, shit, I made me forget my statement. All right, here we go. Um, I'm gonna ask Nick Mosby if he's willing to come on board, and will he, and then I'm gonna ask Zeke, and I want to be one of the first to put up a form between those two.
Great.
I want to ask him. I'm, I don't want to speak for him, but I have a feeling he's gonna say yes. I'm gonna call him.
Awesome.
I'm gonna ask him. Fenn, I'll repeat that. I want to put together a form between Nick Mosby and Zeke Cohen, but, and anybody else that wants to run, but it looks to me like those are gonna be the two biggies. Don't you think, Mark?
Okay, cool. Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Okay, all right, good. So, uh, what's that, what's that place for people to go to to get jobs and all that stuff? You always give us their little program?
Uh, yeah, um, go to weouthusmovement.org. Um, and not only that, jobs and all that kind of stuff, but we have two brick and mortars. We work with young people, at young ladies and young men, Larry. So, weouthusmovement.org, please.
Well, the hook is coming, so, Mark, thank you so ver, thank you so very much. I appreciate the young man. He's so, he's so polite and right. So, everything's cool. You have a safe one, good family. All things being good and equal. Hope to see as many of you tomorrow night at the National Action Network Greater Baltimore Chapter meeting, New Shallow, six-thirty. Please come and join us. I think you'll say to yourself, "Why? Why didn't I do that sooner?" Peace and blessings to you, family.